Part of the way to the United States of America, it's a republic, it's just what nation under God, in its law, it's just strong.
Okay. We'll now have the revenue neutral rate hearing and we'll open it up for anyone that likes to speak.
I just never, I mean.
We have a, well, she's gonna bring the sheet in here.
All right, well, just in general, I would like to better, I'd like to better understand what the revenue neutral process is and how it fits into the whole, the overall situation as a base. That's a simple question, but I don't understand where that.
It basically means that we would only be taxing the same amount that we taxed the year before.
Okay, and what?
Well, I mean, we, actually, we can't do that because under state law, we have to, there's 20 mills we can't touch. So, anything beyond that 20 would be considered, if we kept it the same, would be considered revenue, or revenue neutral.
Okay, so with respect to that, is that a binding condition?
In this hearing, it's state law.
Okay, so the budget that's proposed then has to be voted on by who to override the revenue neutral plan?
For this board.
Okay, okay.
And we won't be voting on the budget tonight.
No, I get that. I just, I didn't understand the ramifications and who's in charge and how that fits. So, thank you.
You bet. Okay. Sorry if I butcher anybody's name here. First one is Wally, is it Bisby?
It's everybody back, but nobody else.
Okay. Sorry.
So, first of all, thank you for not voting on this tonight because we were at the city council meeting today also. And all the votes were cast before anybody even talked, right? So, we talked, but we knew what was going on. So, the first thing I'd like to, and our state senator was there also, our state senator took a look at the council and basically said, hey, let's know what these people have to say. So.
Just to clarify, we do, we do have to vote on the resolution tonight, but we don't have to vote on the budget.
Fair enough, fair enough. So, you know, again, I'll be, try to be brief and as quick as possible. Revenue neutral is something that confuses the heck out of me because I keep on hearing the term go around. Yet, last year, my taxes went up $500. This year, my taxes are going up $500, $1,000, right? I'm 62 years old, starting to look toward retirement, starting to look toward a fixed income. I am all for paying teachers, I am all for safety in schools, I am all for fixing infrastructure. I have no problem paying for that stuff, right? My problem turns into, I bought my house in 99, I was paying about $1,800 in taxes a year. Today, if you pass this resolution, I'm paying over $6,000. That's not sustainable to me, right? I'm planning on living 20, 30 more years, right? I can't be paying $12,000 in taxes on no income. So, I just want you guys to think a little bit before you pass something like this. The last thing I'll say is, two years ago, there was a $34 million bond put up for vote, which the voters in Miami County voted down. The next year, I believe, there was a $24 million bond put up in front of the voters, they passed that vote. I will first, be the first one to tell you, I did not vote to pass that, right, for these reasons. But what I don't want to see is, I don't want to see our taxes go up to cover that other $10 million shortage. What I want to see is, I want to see you guys prioritize work, right? So, if you have the choice of putting a new roof on a building or putting in new locker rooms for the football team, put a new roof on the building. If you have the choice of fixing the AC system or building brand-new softball and baseball fields, fix the AC system. I think that's the thing that gets my ire the most, right? It, it's not a blank check, right? It's not give me more money every single year. Prioritize the work, if you can stay within the budget from the year before minus whatever the state's gonna take, stay within that budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is Ron, it's a Kasich.
Lozenek.
Balsick.
Balsick.
I also spoke at the meeting this morning, uh, basically give you just a short rundown. My taxes are $8,000 a year. With my social security, I make $24,000 a year. I give one-third of my money to pay all of the Lewisburg schools. And my wife says, why aren't you go get yourself a new truck? I can't do that because I give me a third of my income to pay all or to Lewisburg schools. My taxes have gone from $2,000 to $8,000 a year. And I want to know when this nonsense is gonna stop. Talk about revenue neutral, okay? You said, well, the mill's going down. Great, our assessments went up. So, revenue neutral to me is a lie. It does not mean you're gonna pay less taxes. It just means we're gonna go around it to get more taxes for what we want. You need to live within your budget. I don't know what was wrong with the budget four years ago, but apparently something is. Or six years ago, for that matter. So, we have had it with these taxes. And you can put all the fake news up here on the wall that you want with this phrase of revenue neutral. But hopefully it's a crock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, next is Bill Lorenzen.
Another senior citizen, but you're probably gonna hear a bunch about the same. Electrical engineer background, both my parents were math teachers, so I have nothing against teachers. They have a tough job, but fact of the matter is, it's like all of them. In the last four years, just the tax I paid to the school, not talking about county or anything else, that's gone up 60%. My income at the same time went up 2.1, 6.4, 2.3. So, there's a, everyone knows math incur, there's a crossing point where you can't afford to do it anymore. Let's see, and two years ago, you increased the taxes on the people that live in Lewisburg area, 1.4 million extra dollars. Last year, $813,000. If we do the revenue increase instead of remaining revenue neutral, you're proposing it goes up 1.3 million dollars. To me, I'm, I'm, I'm out 500 bucks more if you pass this and revenue neutral. $500 is going out to eat once in a while or put more gas in the car and everything else that has gone up. I don't see any reason why we have to go up 15%, and I vote for him. Let's look at things that we can maintain. I mean, what, what have, I'll ask you a question. What have you given up from last year if you don't do the increase? What do you have to give up? Question.
I mean, this isn't really a question to answer, Seth.
Oh, well, you're asking me to give up a lot, so it would be, but anyways, like everyone else, too much.
Uh, next Janet Houghton.
I am not on social security yet, but it is quickly coming. I would, while I feel compassionate to our seniors of our community, I know that they have experienced, I think, 8% increases in your social security in 2023 over the prior year. That tells me that the governments that are in charge, our tax dollars, know that the cost of living is up. I understand that. It's up for our school districts as well. And so, I'm here to say I'm fully in favor of you exceeding revenue neutral. I understand that by passing a budget that doesn't allow you to accommodate for inflation would be devastating to our school district. I would further add, for those of you that met with Senator Baumgartner this morning, talk to her about the threshold by which there is a property tax rebate, right? There's a property tax rebate for gentlemen like you. If you've told your full story up here, you're eligible for a property tax rebate.
They didn't meet with Molly Baumgartner, they're talking about the county R and R meeting they were at this afternoon, and I know that because I saw them.
Okay, that's fine. Go Senator Baumgartner after to change that threshold so that more people are eligible for a rebate on their.
All right, we're gonna move on here. Bob Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I've been here before and I think probably you remember. I don't have a handout like I did last year. It just didn't, didn't have time to print the thing. Come up with the numbers in the same fashion that I did a year ago. Basically, if you look at the budget compared with last year and compared with the year before, if you take out the bond fund, which gentleman mentioned $24 million, which is past a couple of years ago and 34 and a half million paid. If you take that out, you're left with non-bond funds in the newspaper. There are only four, very simple. There's a general fund that we all know is 20 mills. That is state mandated, there's nobody that can mess with that, it's locked in. So, that on itself, by itself, because of our huge increase in appraisals, that means that spending is up 28% over two years and up 17.3% over the past year. If you take, that's a given. To come up with revenue neutral, you have to lower the rest of it a bunch to make up for that. Uh, that's, that's spending that's locked in. Supplemental fund is basically a way to adjust for that general fund, the way I look at it. And what is proposed is a 9.3% increase from a year ago. Lock out the 17.3% for the general fund. So, the total of the two is up 14% year over year. What I'll call overall general funds. Over the two years, it's up 25%. 25.3% to be precise. Cost of living fund, I, I made the charge a year ago. Nobody, nobody responded. The answer, I guess, is you don't have to respond. I will say that other, other groups have responded to questions. But the cost of living fund is inflation. Well, inflation is already built into the general fund and the special fund, the supplemental fund. So, I don't have, I see that as a splash fund. That's basically money you can spend however you want. Whether you know it or not, it will be spent. Cost of living fund this year is only up 2.3%, but the previous year was up 640%. I'm sorry, over the two years, it's up 640%. Then there's capital outlay. And a year ago, I mentioned, I can't understand how you can spend so much money on capital outlay when you just have a $24 million bond issue that was funded, that the voters narrowly approved. But it was approved, the money is spent, we got new roofs, we got new air conditioning, we got new security, we got a lot of. Paving parking lots, redoing parking lots, adding, uh, winning for whatever. Anyway, the capital outlay fund is up 16% from a year ago. Over the two years, it's up 32%. What I'm saying is the operating funds, non-bond funds are up 13.8% that we're paying for as property tax. That's what our property taxes are going up. That's operating funds, that's non-bond fund. Take out the bond funds, you're left with only four funds. The total of those is up 13.8%. Over the two years, it's up 32.1%. So, yeah, the grand total is a mere 12.7% because the bond fund was only up 7% this year. That's just bond principal and interest. That's mandated, you know, you gotta pay that, I understand that. Uh, anyway, I just, uh, I, I think we deserve some answers as to where the money is being spent. That, I understand there's, there's an issue with the state that we're in such a luxurious county and school district that we don't get as much money from the state. Maybe we think we should. But still, we've got people that are hurting. And I think, I can't understand how you can possibly justify 13.8%. It's not just inflation. 13.8% is a lot of money. And a lot of people are hurt. I, I'm not, just on social security, I'm not hurting. I need to see my taxes go up by hundreds of thousands of dollars either. And I don't think either any of you do, but somehow you justify it. So, I think we deserve some answers and justification.
Thank you. Uh, next is Harry, is it Gregor?
Thank you. I have to agree with some of these former people. I actually work here in the district part-time as a substitute teacher, have been doing that now for 10-plus years. And we're in a situation with these taxes and they keep going up and up. And all I hear is that we have to compete with these other districts in Johnson County. If a bond issue comes up, oh, we have to renew it because you can't let a bond go lapse. Yes, you can. You know, we have spent so much money over the last few years. And when they say, oh, well, we're saving on mowing expenses because we put in a new football field. Well, I, it costs just over a million dollars. You can do a lot of mowing for a million dollars. We have to build this new field and we have to, because we have to bus. Well, you can bus a lot of games before you have to, you know, end up doing all that other. We're spending stuff on frivolous things that we really don't need to be spending money on. And I am ready to, I'm gonna be starting social security here in a couple of months. And our taxes have gone through the roof like everyone else's. And it's getting to the point, I'm hoping I can speak on behalf of several friends, we're almost getting to the point you're forcing them to move out of the community because they can't afford the taxes. Our taxes have gone so high that it's, it's just unreal. And we really need you to take heed. We need to be revenue neutral. The assessments on our properties have gone up so much that even though the mills may be this level, you're getting that much more money because our appraised values are so high. And we just can't keep going at this rate. You know, it's hurting a lot of people and especially now in these times with inflation and all the prices going up and up and up. People just can't do it anymore. So, I really ask you, I know most of you probably have already made up your minds, but I really hope you will think very seriously about that and take to heart what your constituents need and what they really need you to do in this case and do the right thing and to go back to the revenue neutral instead of exceeding all of those issues. You've got great buildings, we've got great facilities, we've got great staff. You know, the other thing would be maybe to have a maintenance budget as part of your thing. People shouldn't have to vote a bond issue to, you know, to replace carpeting and air conditioning or heating or, you know, that should be routine maintenance. You don't, you know, people in their homes have to budget for that and it's part of your, just your regular budget. So, please keep all those things in mind and really give some heart to what you're hearing tonight from most of these people that it is really a strain and a very hurtful thing for a lot of them. And I can see in the next couple of years, if you, this keeps going, a lot of people are gonna be forced to leave the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just to clarify, we do have a long-term maintenance budget. And the, the money from the bond was spent on Broadmoor, this building here and the, and the high school and the middle school. But we have a, we, this board has made a concerted effort to avoid having another bond for maintenance. So, I just want to clarify.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Dale and is it Valerie?
I just thought it was a sign and shape, we're good.
Oh, okay. Okay.
See what's going on.
All right.
Where we agree with everybody who's spoken so far, our taxes went up $60,000 on our place. We moved here since '88. And every year, the taxes go up. And it just gets to the point where we're both retired now and gonna have to start thinking about where the money goes.
Well, staying here or moving, but it, and I love our.
Can you come up?
I love our school district. We moved here for the school district itself. But at no point in time, we had the option to move to Johnson County and we chose to move to Miami County instead because we didn't want to have to keep up with the Joneses. We wanted to come here with a good, balanced school system and we got it and we're very grateful for it. But I don't feel like I need to put up with or support what Blue Valley's doing. I don't have that income. That's my point.
Thank you. Okay, next, Scott and Christie.
I thought it was something I think too. I realize that this is a, you know, very passionate situation. And I myself support the schools a ton and want them to be the best that they can be. It is a unusual time for us, for everybody, you, you all, board included, and all of us. And with the increasing costs, so I, I, and I realize that you're in a tough spot. But it appears to me that there's a disconnect between, you know, what your goal is and what the reality is for all the people here, including myself, with respect to available income. You know, myself, you know, of the four deals, we have a 18.9% increase, a 10.5% increase, 18.7% increase, 20% increase. And I realize that that's a mixture of assessment, you know, and, and the budget. I asked Janet, I said, I haven't actually seen the budget, you know, myself, and I realize it's available. I would like to take the opportunity, and I will, to look at it and understand where, where the allocations are. So, I can better figure out how that all, all fits. But I agree with basically the sentiment here is, is that there has to be some kind of place where we can meet, you know, to help out the constituents and the people that support all this versus on the other side, where all that money's going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, is it Rice?
And I'm here for basically the same reasons. You know, we lived here almost by their throwing in because our grandkids are 1.3 miles from my friend. And I like that. And when we first came here, that was feasible and we, we could handle that. But with a 29% increase in our home value and a 45% increase in our home value, we're quickly running out of time being able to stay here. And we need, what we're asking for, I think a lot of us are, we're asking for physical responsibility because there's only so much money out there. And yes, we got a raise on our social security, whoever said that. But then our medical, uh, our insurance went up 16 or 18%. So, there's another 10% sitting right there that nobody helped us out. And so, we're seeing all of the continual non-stop increase. And I understand, I, I love the teachers here and your principals, you and your superintendent. They're all outstanding people. But we've got to, we've got to find some physical balance. Because if you've, you know, this revenue neutral, if you really were revenue neutral, you'd still be making over 20% because of the increase in property. Because, you know, the middle of the county, but my house is worth 45% more than I bought it four years, four and a half years ago. And I think that's the challenge. And perhaps for next year, because unfortunately, we're not answering any questions tonight as we did at some of the other meetings that several of us have attended.
Can I, can I clarify? We, we had a question and answer at the previous meeting.
Okay, so that's a really, and that brings up a good question, I think, to the teens. If we want to be involved and hear you discuss the budget, when does that discussion start? When are you gonna start budget discussions for, for 24, 25?
We haven't said that yet.
When, when did it happen this year?
April, we started negotiating with the teachers, so around April.
Okay, okay. So, I think all of us should put April on our calendars.
And all of that is on our web, on the website also, all of those dates and times.
Oh, thanks, that would be great, thank you. Because I think it's imperative going forward that many of us be more involved in hearing, hearing what you have to say as you're going through the budget. And I, I can't, you know, my boss is President Biden. And I can't call him up and say, I need a raise. I don't have, I don't have any choice. And so, like several people in this room, we may be forced to leave here because our taxes here are more than they were in Johnson County because there are less people. So, that, that's my point. And you're gonna see a little bit more of me. I meet with Mr. Berryman, Dr. Berryman, uh, about once a quarter, once every six months. But you're gonna see a lot more of me because it's, it's getting to the point where it's taxation without representation because you don't understand what all, you don't seem to understand what all of us. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I do appreciate all of you being on the school board. I mean, you know, we desperately need a school board and a senate board. And we appreciate that very, very much. But year after year, this is a good war.
Is it Joy? Eber, Egbert? Eber, Egbert?
You butchered it so bad.
Or at risk?
Yeah, one fifteen Sheridan Drive.
She doesn't come back in the way.
We'll come back to them. Um, Dennis? Egbert two?
But they thought it was a sign-up sheet and they also.
Oh, okay. Is it Linda Gas?
I thought it was a sign.
Okay, okay. Sandra Cockburn? Sorry. Okay. All right, that's the end of the list. Is there anyone else that would like to be? Go ahead. When you come up, please state your name and address.
Jared Worthington, ten eleven South Twelfth Street, the House Screaming Children. I feel for everyone that's in a situation that I'm not in as far as social security. Trying to understand the budget was where most of my energy has been. I can't speak for your situation. I do feel for you. I know the people here did not raise the assessed values of our property by this astronomical amount. And I feel that every dollar that's accounted for in the budget has a purpose. I don't think anyone up here made any of those decisions lightly. I want to thank you for the tough decisions you've made. And they've all contributed to our mission statement of keeping our kids safe. A safe nurturing environment, not just surviving, but thriving. We've had some staff development with other schools and events with other schools, and they wish they were us. I think that they're blown away to find out that we get less state aid than some of them, yet our taxes are lower than theirs. I don't want anyone to leave our community, but our area schools are paying more in taxes than we are. I think you're being asked to thread a needle that's almost impossible to thread. But we, in the budgeting process, there's so many parts that where you are not allowed flexibility. Your state mandated to do certain things. That sheet, those documents are very complex. But I do know that if we were to spend one dollar over the final budget, we would have to meet. And that process, you know, could come at the expense of being able to provide services to students who need them right then and there. So I'm fully aware that even though I don't know every cell of the budget, I know that we have come in under budget every year that Dr. Beerman's been here. Some of you have been here for a different number of years of his tenure. Some of you have been here for every year of his tenure. We come in under budget every year. It's part of the process. Last year, we were budgeted to, our approved budget was at thirty-one point two million dollars. And the actual amount spent was twenty-eight point six. Almost ten percent under what we estimated. There's even, last year, I believe we spent seven hundred thousand dollars less than the year before. I don't know where else that's happening. I know it's frustrating for everyone to deal with the increased costs of everything. But in a time where budgets, inflation's out of control, for a school to spend less than they did the year before, that should be the story. And I'm proud of our district.
We haven't anybody else?
I have one. Go ahead. Doug Shane, six zero one four West United Fifth Street, Lewisburg. I'm gonna speak in facts. You guys did not spend less money last year than you did the year before. As a matter of fact, you spent record amounts of money for your district and you collected record amounts of tax revenue and state aid. This is bare bones of the facts. As you guys have worked through your budget process, there have been more comparisons to other districts' mill levies and talking about relative numbers that quite honestly mean nothing, including cost to educate our people. Not to say that it's meaningless, but to say when we look in and we compare that and we say Lewisburg, it costs twelve thousand some odd dollars per student in our budget, and it costs another school district seventeen, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars. That's the way it's supposed to be by design when we look at state funding aid. Okay? Because we have fewer students at risk, we have a relatively low impoverished population in this town, and we have relatively few students that are otherwise identified at risk because they're behind grade level or because they're on some sort of IAP or they're special education or something else. The way that the funding formula works sets the legal maximum budget that you can authorize as a board. In this budget, I'm not sure how many of you guys went line item. In this budget, you are at your maximum budget. That means you cannot go a penny more. And when you come in under budget, as you did last year, that is because your actual legal maximum determined by the state was less than what you actually passed in your budget. So one, you had to. And two, you also transferred an unencumbered cash in other accounts and you also had unplanned spending in various line items. So if I'm given the time, we can address some of that. I don't think that you guys truly know if you need to exceed the revenue neutral rate, because I don't believe you actually have a good grasp on your spending. You spent one meeting this entire year actually going through and looking at some of these line items. And a thirty-two million dollar budget, you guys looked at it for three hours. And otherwise, you sat there and you talked about mill levies. That is not going through a budgetary diligence process and actually determining how much money you need to spend for building. Your building needs assessment did not have a single measurable or attainable budget goal. We need to hire more staff. We should pay more. We should do some of these things. What positions? What salary should we put into the budget? Should it be this fiscal year? Should it be next fiscal year? That's determining budgetary need. You guys didn't identify that in this. How do you actually know? And where is the investment going to go? Now, as we look at the general fund. In last year's budget, that was ratified. There was one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, eight hundred, seven hundred and thirty-five, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. That was over budgeted in line items. That was thirteen point six seven percent of your general fund budget. Now, that's over budgeting. So that meant that you didn't actually spend what you budgeted. You didn't actually spend that on that line item. The, the total amount of overspending, so you either budgeted nothing or you budgeted something less than what you spent, was one million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand and forty-eight dollars. Out of the general fund, seven hundred and fifty thousand of that, so almost fifty percent, was on a single, single line item of supplies. As, as we go through this, there's a lot of money spent on, I call it, supplying, othering, and furnishing. Tons of line items of overspending, all related to those categories in last year's budget. That you did not plan on spending that money on. And then a lot of transfers that were not put into your budget. Because you were so plushed with cash, you had to find ways to spend it. That line item, so out of under general administration, supplies. You budgeted two hundred thousand dollars last year and you spent nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. This year, you're gonna, you budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand in that lineup. An example of an extreme overspend. As we look at your transfers, last year for special education, you budgeted two million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. You actually transferred one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. This year, you are budgeting point five million dollars. Seems like a bit of an over budget relative to what the actual spend was, especially as we that last year. Now, as we jump into the federal funds, all of the expenditure from your federal funds for this upcoming school year and the prior two school years were attributed to purchased professional and technical services as a line item. I was on the board two years ago. It was not my understanding that all of those three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars went to, quote, purchased professional and technical services. We were talking about things like hand sanitizer, Panda cams, some facility updates. Those kinds of things is what we were told that those federal funds were being spent on. Are we to truly believe that out of the entire few pages of federal fund line items, that one hundred percent of the spend for the last three years has gone into a single line item of purchased professional and technical services? I don't think that that passes the smoothest. The dollar amount might be accurate, but the line item accounting is not. There's no way that that can be true. Supplemental general. Again, your budget, you actually passed a budget for four point two million dollars. The state said, hmm, actually it's three point eight eight. You guys overshot. Like the third year in a row that that's happened. You over budgeted, so now we're going to line items, eight hundred and one thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Over budgeted, so meaning budgeted this much, you spent less than what. That's nineteen percent of the overall budget for supplemental general. You overspent four hundred and eighty-two thousand. That's eleven and a half percent of your budget. And you had a completely unbudgeted transfer to vocational education and an increase in professional development transfers, unbudgeted. You had a huge increase in liability insurance. I thought that was interesting because I thought your liability insurance was only gonna go up if you didn't rejoin KASB. Looked like that happened anyway. Just thought I'd call that out while I'm here. And we had a huge increase in supplies over the last couple of years and so just the supplies, broad category and others. So this is my othering category that we see lots of increases. Two years ago, it was sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Last year, you budgeted twenty thousand and spent seventy-eight thousand, and this year you're gonna budget almost eighty-two thousand dollars for other supplies. In supplies category. There's another supplying. You also, in other support services, under the salary, under the employee benefits category, there's a category of other, under employee benefits. I don't exactly know what other employee benefits are, but there's no salary tied to this for other support services. There's no certified staff. There's no insurance. There's no social security listed in this same category. And yet, last year, you reportedly expended fifty thousand, two hundred and three dollars in that category. Just other. Here's some other support services. Here's another other category. Twenty-two thousand dollars now budgeted to be thirty thousand this year. Special education was also over budgeted on the transfer out of supplemental general. Pre-school age at risk, increasing from eighty-five thousand, or increasing to eighty-five thousand from twenty thousand this year. I hope that there's a person tied to that, because the unencumbered cash balance will continue to decline, to climb if not. I'm sure you guys talked about that. I hope you did. If we look at at-risk, one of the most important spending categories that you guys have for students. It looks like we've hopefully transferred some salaries, hopefully positions to this category. But your unencumbered cash balance last year grew from four hundred and thirty thousand to four hundred and forty, almost four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand, an increase of four point six percent. And going into this year, your unencumbered cash balance grew seven point one percent. The at-risk fund, as you might know, can actually carry an unencumbered cash balance at any item, unlike your supplemental general and your general fund. It's an easy category to shuffle funds into at the end of the year, if you need to put money where, unspent money where it can go. But what's interesting is that now all of a sudden we see at-risk budgeting, a huge increase for general supplemental, textbooks, supplies, miscellaneous supplies, property, equipment, and furnishings. That's great if our at-risk students need textbooks and so on and so forth. That's great, but are we gonna spend fifty thousand dollars only on textbooks for at-risk? Do we know this? What's the program that it's tied to? Or is this simply a bucket to go throw fifty thousand dollars into so we can try to justify it and then not spend it later and spend it somewhere else? Twenty-five thousand dollars for supplies and student support services, that's added. So just more supplying, more supplying, more supplying. Virtual education continues to grow in unencumbered cash balance. It doubled last year. Driver training added a, another, almost increased, almost about twenty-five percent. Driver training unencumbered cash balance increased. Oh, there's another forty-five thousand dollars budgeted in property, equipment, and furnishings. More furnishing going on. Food service, this one actually makes me pretty sick. Mr. Antizel, you asked a great question about food service. Where you asked, why do we need to budget one point two million dollars for food service management? I thought that that was supposed to save us lots of money. I had the same impression when we voted on this two years ago. Last year, you guys budgeted one point five million dollars for food service management, one point five. You guys need to spend six hundred and twenty thousand. That's a pretty big fudge factor. Especially when you guys just increased the cost of meals ten cents a piece. Putting more financial burden on our kids and our families. You're budgeting one point two million this year. Even if you put in a twenty percent cost increase on that line item, that would take it from six hundred and twenty thousand to about seven hundred and forty-five thousand. That's a lot less than one point two. And you're gonna continue to unencumber a cash balance in that fund, which unencumbered a balance of almost a million dollars during the COVID era. Of course, we had a lot of federal funds during that era for, for student lunches. So much in fact, that we spent apparently six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars on equipment and furnishings out of the food service. And we just passed a twenty-four million dollar bond issue to put a new kitchen in LMS. And you guys are saying that we need to increase taxes on capital outlay for, to pay for things like kitchens. Food service should not ever be a profit center. Food is an essential item to the well-being of our kids. This should never be a profit center. Right now, it's a profit center. And you're budgeting as such. Special education, your unencumbered cash balance is going from one point three, five million to one point six six million. Oh, by the way, I told all of you last year that your special education cooperative had a line item for supplies budgeted at one point two million dollars. And I asked them, what kind of supplies are you buying that's gonna benefit our students from Lewisburg that are in the East Central Kansas Co-op and their student achievement? What, what supplies are you gonna buy to the tune of one point two million dollars? The first superintendent Meek said that he refused to answer the question. The gander of what they spent? Hundred and twenty thousand out of the one point two million. You know what they're budgeting again this year? One point two million. Have you guys asked any questions about the money you're sending to that co-op? Because you're gonna send record amounts this year. I believe Dr. Beerman said it was gonna be fifty-nine thousand dollars a student to the co-op. You guys need to be asking the questions, because you're missing some really big improvements.
That statement's incorrect. I mentioned we have one student that was going to Lake Mary, but it shouldn't be that much.
Okay.
So one student to Lake Mary, not all of our students to the co-op.
Okay.
Very big difference.
Yeah, absolutely. Regardless, it's a questionnaire. Career and post-secondary unbudgeted spend. But now also in career and post-secondary, now we see line items for general supplemental, textbooks, supplies, miscellaneous supplies, and other. Similar to other things, for, similar to at-risk, again, if those are textbooks that are needed, that's great. We'll all provide textbooks. Of course, we also increased all of our technical fees. We also increased our Chromebook fees. Very few teachers actually use books in the classroom, and many times it's only on the Chromebooks, so I'm not quite sure what textbook fees we're doing.
Based on what? Now, we've, we've sat, we've sat here and listened to this chastising by you, okay? And, and I've wrote down about fifteen assumptions that you've made, okay?
I'm looking at numbers.
And you're saying you're looking at numbers, but you're making a lot And you're saying you're looking at numbers, but you're making a lot of assumptions. You can't speak for the teachers that don't use books. Are you in the classroom using books? Let me ask you that question.
I am challenging budgetary assumptions.
But you said you're using facts to make statements.
I'm reading.
You made an assumption that you called a fact. And that's not, that's, that's not what you said you're here to do.
There's a lot of instruction happening that does not require paper textbook and is not being, and paper textbook is not being used. And that is happening relative to when I was a student versus where it was basically altered. There is a shift in education. I'm not saying that you're misinterpreting. What I am saying is that you're showing budgetary line items.
But you did.
You're increasing fees and you're using these line items to justify a budgetary increase. I am pointing out areas that I think are worth digging into to determine is that an actual budgetary spend?
But you also made the assumption that nobody. You also made the assumption that she didn't look into the budget, he didn't look into the budget, she didn't look into the budget, he didn't look in the budget, he didn't look in the budget. I didn't look in the budget. He didn't look in the budget. You did say that.
I said you looked at it for three hours.
We'll go back to the field.
I'm saying you looked at it for three hours as a board.
That's what you assumed. You don't know how much.
You cannot meet as a board outside of.
We don't have to meet as a board to look into the budget. Okay, Doug, we're going to wrap this up and you know very well.
That's fine.
That we can look into the budget with, without being meeting as a board.
And I stated you did not discuss it as a board line item by light on.
We can all go back and review the video. That's all I'm saying.
We're wrapping up. One, yes, one final point that I want to bring up because it's another glaring inaccuracy in your budget.
On the textbooks, whether we buy a physical textbook.
You have to rent.
That, no, that we grew up to or the online that go on our Chromebooks, McGraw-Hill.
Those are.
Yes.
And I understand.
Irrelevant. I mean, whether it's the physical textbook or the online.
And I'm sure they make sure that they get paid either way and I get that. I get that. I understand that's an ongoing fee. But these are new budgetary line items in addition to what was there before.
Because we're purchasing new books for, I'm sorry, correct me, math or.
And there's also a spend that shows up in the textbook revolving, right? That's part of the, that's part of the conversation. I'm saying that there are multiple points that it shows up. It's in addition to what you guys have already budgeted. You guys take things very personally. I know I have a stern tone and that's fine.
That's so odd. But again, an assumption you're making, sir. I, I don't know you from Adam. You don't know me from Adam. I'm just simply saying that I'm, I'm all about facts. I would love to review your facts. I'd love to see what you have.
Yeah.
But to come here and chastise folks that you make assumptions on is not a fair position for you to be in. And then to change your tone and then say, no, but I'm actually.
Compare, Mr. Mountain, part of my point is that you guys did not compare, or I don't believe you compared, at least in open meeting. You did not compare, what did we budget last year versus what did we actually spend? We, we. Now, when you, hold on, no. What you're looking at on this form is what you spent. You would have to go pull your budget from last year to look at what you budgeted. And when I reviewed your live meetings, that is not the comparison you made. You look, this is great. This is information, right? This is what you spent, which is different from what you budgeted, okay? And when we look at what you budget versus what you spend, that's where we see patterns of spending behavior. Just real quick, I'll end on this activity fund. I know that I told all of you that your activity fund is not, cannot be reflective of truth. Revenue sources, the only revenue source that we show on activity fund is admissions and gate receipts at one point two two five million. That would be more than Blue Valley. You have one point two two five million that goes through activity funds and its various forms of student membership fees, unencumbered cash and some of those funds, so on and so forth. That dollar amount I am sure is accurate, but that is not a true reflection of what your revenue is. That is not a truthful line item as far as revenue goes in the activity fund. And actually, last year on your budget, the activity fund budget put a hundred percent of spend, so it showed all of that money being spent, which again, it's just not true, right? One of the biggest activity funds is the band for the band trip, right? That gets expended once every four years, right? That doesn't get expended every year. It's unencumbered and it's held, okay? Last year, you had it in purchase and professional technical services, a hundred percent of that money being spent. This year, it shifted down into supplies and it showed the expend from last year being in supplies, even though it was budgeted in purchase professional and technical services. All of that money's not being spent on purchased professional and technical services. It's just not. So that's just a glaring, just a, just something that's glaringly untrue in the budget. So I know that I'm being stern and I'm being, I think you guys can do better. I think there are patterns in this budget that shows that we have plenty of cash in this district. To the point where honestly, we can be a little bit flippant. Put a little fudge here, a little fudge there, and then we have plenty of money to be able to go spend and do things later, okay? It might be that those are great things to spend money on. I don't know. I might be happy to have my taxes maxed out, like it's going to happen again this year. But I don't know that you know that we actually need the money because I don't think you have a good sense of where you're spending money on, okay? It's not an attack on the teachers. It's not an attack on saying we don't need this, that, or the other thing. I'm saying I just don't think that we know. And I think if you pass this budget tonight, you're passing some things that are just pat, you're, you're passing the budget with things that are just.
We aren't voting on the budget tonight.
Your agenda shows that you're going to be, that you're going to be voting on the budget.
We're going to be voting on the revenue neutral, but we're not voting on the budget.
Your agenda that was online showed two components, R and R and the budget.
Parents. Yeah, we're not on the budget.
We're having a revenue neutral hearing tonight and once this is adjourned, then we're having a budget hearing.
But we will not take a vote.
That's fine. So regardless, I don't think you have, I do not think that you have a defensive, defensible position to justify exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Understand from a procedural basis, the reason to do it so that you can, right? If you don't say, if you don't make the resolution to say that we can, then you can't. You can't go back and change it after the fact. But what I would say is this budget needs to be cleaned up. And I have offered multiple times, Mr. Foot, to sit down and try to go through these line items with you, but when I get crickets, I do get irritated when I don't have the opportunity to.
I have, I have the same items you do and I'm just as capable, Mr. Shane, as you are.
Thank you to the district staff. Okay. When you have a patron that is willing to take this time and wants to sit down with you and help ask questions and go through this, to ignore that I, I, I think is, is an insult to a lot of these people in, in the room that are concerned about their taxes, that don't know how to go through this process. And if we can communicate and we can say, yeah, these are neat areas, then we might say, yeah, totally happy to do that. But when we see some of the patterns that I see in this budget and it brings up a lot of questions and we get crickets when we try to ask questions or non-responsive, we try to ask questions, or Abby and I get it, there's only a few of us.
Can I ask you a question? Where were you at the Q and A? Why were you not here?
I was unable to attend because I was preoccupied.
Okay, thank you. So I will just say something. The reason.
And I also submitted questions.
So um, I will say something. The reason we did it this way this year, that we're not voting on the budget tonight, because in the past, people have showed up, talked, and then we voted. And I said, I think it was a concerted effort by the board to one, have the Q and A, to have people involved. And then also to not make a decision tonight. We want to hear everybody. We all get to go home, hear what was said, think about our decision and then come back next week. So that's why we decided.
I appreciate. So if I'm misunderstanding reading your agenda, I'll own that.
So that, I mean, that's why we want to do it this way because I think there's very valid concerns and things coming from both sides. We want to hear that and then we can make our decision, not just in at six, seven, ten, whatever.
I mean, we are voting on revenue neutral, but not on the budget.
Yes. Yeah. And I anticipate that you guys will pass it and I understand the procedural reason to do that. But I do think that this budget needs cleaned up and I think there's a lot of question areas that can be, that you can dive into. Including typing up your assumptions from what you're getting from the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I promise I won't be believed, okay?
State your name and address.
I am Kimberly Peyton. I live at eighty-three Seventy West two hundred and sixty-third Street here in Lewisburg. I'm also an educator of twenty-four years here in this district. And I will not ever underestimate the work and preparation that you undertake to take care of our school, our district, our community, our students, our staff. To get into the weeds, that's not what the budget is for anyway. We know that there are so many, the teachers were shaking our heads. There are so many different elements that fall into those budget line items. I don't use textbooks in my classroom anymore, but I sure use websites. And those websites cost money and they have to be renewed every year. So there have to be different ways of kind of finagling some of that stuff. But to, to have it presented to our board who takes care of us as if you are financially mismanaging the school district is just appalling to me. And I needed to come up here and just tell you that we know there is a lot more than what the public sees as far as what we see you present here in a meeting. There's a lot of preparation that goes into this and it's impressive. And I know it may seem simplistic, but there is so much else that goes into a budget that the general public doesn't understand. I've been a teacher since nineteen ninety-five and I could not sit here and explain to you the difference between the funds. Maybe that's why I'm an English teacher and not a math teacher. But it makes no sense to me. But I do know, because my husband also sat in this chair over here for eight years. And I know he's stressed and he struggled. He prepared as well you do. So I, again, I want to apologize for anyone who has made you feel that people think that you are not prepared and that you do not care and that you're money grubbing and just trying to just throw money around because we know. We know you don't. You take everything very seriously as far as the line items and everything that you do for our district. So I wanted to make sure I said that so you know that and thank you for all you do for us. Okay.
We have any more?
Hi, Kimberly Mayberry, East South Fifth Street, Lewisburg, Kansas. Um, I know a few of you here. And first of all, I don't think anyone is trying to make you feel as if you're uninformed and all that. What I do think is trying to be stated is that there's a budget put before you by somebody else that maybe isn't fully these line items. I mean, supplies, 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 supplies. Yes, there's a lot of supplies needed for a lot of kids. I a hundred percent get that. I teach my class. I get that. But when I'm hearing fifty-nine thousand dollars per student and this and that, and I can teach my own for five hundred dollars a year.
That's a special ed student.
Understood. But if I need something special for my kid, I go out there and pay it, I'm not getting tax funding to take care of my child in that manner. My choice. I get that. But I'm asking you guys to sit there and please, 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 please think about, I know each and every one of you. You work full-time and you have children, the ones that I, the ones that I know and grandchildren. What I'm asking is for you to sit there and maybe take some extra time and think about, if I had my budget like this, would there not be some more questions? I know my husband would be asking me, what's all this under supplies? What's, what, what all are we getting? You'd want to know some more information. We, the public, who have elected you, are just asking for more information. That's it. We're asking for information. And, and I understand there was a Q and A. I didn't realize that. I didn't know that until tonight. But to, to come here and to talk to you guys and to be here over and over again, well, we're not answering questions. It's a little frustrating. It, it, no, it's a lot frustrating. I'm asking you to hear from people who are living, I, I just sat down and went over my budget again today. Because I'm having to make adjustments within my means.
Yes.
I don't get to go ask someone for a raise. I'm asking you to hear that. Please. I don't get to go ask someone for a raise. My husband got a raise, but it was not anywhere near the percentages y'all are talking about. Nowhere near that. Please. Yeah, if you have another week, I am begging you to take some extra time. For those that have kids, I will babysit them for free. I love kids. I am a house that always has extras. I want them around. I love having them around. Please take some extra time and look at those line items. I'm begging you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
I have one more question. And it came from, you know, some of the discussion. I think this is really good. Because this is a important deal, but the gentleman that presented here, in point of clarification or understanding, the budget last year was about thirty-one point two million.
Correct.
And the statement was that the spend was twenty-eight point six million. So you saved about two point six million, nine percent. So I'm trying to understand why.
We don't get all that money.
Okay, so there's an increase on top of the savings from last year. That's just my point. Trying to understand where, where all this money goes.
Right.
I have one more statement. Is that good? I actually used to work for a small government agency called the Internal Revenue Service. I was in charge of computer operations in the entire United States. We got a budget every year and if it wasn't spent, my boss got mad. Because they said, well, if we don't spend it next year, we won't get as much. We're asking you, as the lady that just spoke before me, to look at your budget. Why isn't it what it was four years ago? And the gentleman spoke about supplies, supplies, supplies. I think you should hire him.
Hi, John Reese, one-two-three-seven Neal Drive. I'm an educator here in the district. I've been twenty-seven years. I've talked to twenty-two of those. I've negotiated with the board. I've been visible all the time. The one thing I would like to say that some of these people behind me don't realize, Lanny does for sure. We went through some pretty thin times with a few past superintendents. There's a superintendent twenty-seven years ago, God rest his soul, that ran this district with an iron fist and he was a great budget. He was a money man. He took care of the district. We're back to that point where you guys are taking care of us, taking care of the district, and I see you doing a great job. So yeah, my finances have not equaled the growth with taxes and assessments and all that. But that's the reality. It's been that reality for a long time. I'm going to support you. I'm going to negotiate with some of you again this year. We go into negotiations because I'm back on the team. But again, we've been frozen. Four out of five years, we made it through it. We made a change. The district went in a positive direction. And I like to see it keep going that way. I know it's going to cost me more money. I know it's going to cost others more money. But in the long run, in the future, you guys are, have the best interest for our kids and what our district needs. How it ends up with the revenue neutral or anything like that, I'm trusting you guys that you'll make that decision. And if it means there's an increase in budget to meet the needs, increase the budget. Way to, you guys go home over the next week and look at it. There's a way to find something different. I'm going to trust that you're going to do it. We're going to put our trust in you to make the right decisions. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else would like to speak?
Okay. I'm moved to approve revenue neutral rate resolution number eight-three-zero-two-zero-two-three to exceed revenue neutral rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
What's second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve revenue root neutral rate resolution eighty-three zero-two-zero-two-three to exceed revenue neutral rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now we will move into our budget hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I moved to adjourn the fiscal year twenty twenty four revenue na, revenue na, neutral rate budget hearing.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the fiscal year twenty twenty four revenue neutral rate budget hearing. Is there any discussion?
But.
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Bose?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now we will move into our budget hearing. So if anyone would like to speak now, we'll open up the floor. All right, we don't have any speakers. So I move to adjourn the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget hearing.
Second.
Been moving seconded to adjourn the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget hearing.
But.
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Bose?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn the budget hearing.
August thirty.
August, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty three at.
It's the board meeting now.
Oh, board meeting at seven, ten. Sorry.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the August thirtieth, twenty twenty three board meeting at seven, twelve. Is there any, any discussion?
But.
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Bose?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yeah.
Goodell?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.